And the camera's on. Uh, we'll take a minute and look at the minutes. We don't have, we're looking Rick's reports talking over here.
Alrighty.
You want to go my report you said?
Sure, we're just gonna look at it, we ain't gonna be stressing with you. Before we leave now too, I think you have candles in the garage and show you a couple of things.
Those are yours and pass them down to stop, please.
Take him wherever.
Candles, I don't think I've ever took him to the candles, I took him after the sewer plant. And, uh, we haven't been out in the garage or anything, but I figured, aren't two. But the candles, I just wanted to show him that we keep them locked. And all, every time I've checked them, every time, there's always one unlocked.
Well, who does that?
I don't know, it goes through me like a knife.
Oh, by the way, how are you feeling?
On the mend again, on the mend again.
Always, always.
Three blood transfusions, an emblazon, a heart shock.
So you're not AFib anymore, right?
No, it fixed it.
Who? Mine? I've been here for five years.
Why I'm losing blood, they don't know.
We haven't talked about that on TV. I just never understand that, how you can lose it and see where it went and where it come from. We had two sets of minutes, tomorrow we had that six forty-five, just different budget, just off the budget.
When was it?
Last, uh, six forty-five last month.
Oh, okay, the one I missed.
Yeah, Scott and I assigned those too. We'll go ahead and look at, uh, well, we sure wish we had some ink pens at work, I wonder if we could put in for a grant to get a box of ink pen.
I think we need to buy like twelve dozen.
Well, Rick brought a bunch in, I think, I think your cops deal a lot, I'm taking my own bunch of minutes off.
Speaking of pens, hand me that one, please.
Pass, take one and pass him down, be good in your package. Pass one and pass him down, take one and pass him down.
Probably didn't give any little insight to how poor we were, yeah. Yeah, one for sure, one for town, basically. Stewart got all moved.
What?
Stewarts are all moved and moved in and got their
Yes.
stuff hung up on the walls and.
Their place sold, did you see the, um, Sanfield cranes he sent on Facebook?
Oh, yeah.
The electricity is turned on? The electricity is on, that opens?
Yep, I called that next day.
Yeah, he can't even call.
That very next day, um, it must've been the Monday, cause I, unless I come very.
Why were they telling us that it did happen?
Well, and that's when I, and I went mine too, uh, the Moore woman, uh, what's her name, Frank Siskin? I said, just so you know, I called.
Mary Ann.
Mary Ann, I said, I called down there and they said, the power is on, it was okay to turn the power on, by the way.
Nobody's.
I heard, done his heart thought it, but I don't know.
Yeah, we need your copy, don't you?
I'm surprised that, uh, Brandy, I'm thinking, uh, Flane didn't buy it or something, I thought she bought it.
I think the machine at yours, here you go, huh? You need another pen.
Please, cause this one just kinda hit and miss, it's kinda like me.
Can you hand me one of Rick's reports right there? Yeah, thank you. I don't wanna mark on the last one.
I'm marking all over everything you gotta give me.
That's fine, I get, see.
That's what I like about them, gobble them up.
See, this is a nice one here, I don't mark it.
So we did pick up three more cameras, so we had like two that we can have for, if we want for something. And have you seen the proposed ordinance for open burn? That's something very, we'll have to use God and I when I say, um, executive.
Are you in county grants for?
Well, we got it now, we have open burn, that's a pit, fire pit.
Yeah, yeah.
Or when you've got a cookout.
Right, no, we wrote that, I mean, it's just, anybody violating it will be a thousand dollar fine. And I go, you can't charge me a thousand dollars, can't get a pass that much dollars.
It's not maybe in the real world, is it?
Well, I, I think what he was just showing, he tried to emphasize.
Yeah, I think so.
The important, you know, and then I think somewhere in this is, can't be bigger than ten by ten.
Yeah, that's too big.
That's a pretty big fire.
Yes, yes it is.
I don't think she'd be embarrassed, three by three.
Angela found it somewhere, thank you, and I just can't, can't keep moving, I'm freezing right now.
I'm taking, nobody's coming to here.
Wow.
Oh, this is from the norm. And normally if Doug's not here, it's a relative short meeting, we don't know what's, nothing reported. Ron's has, Ron's come to a couple of them, cause they don't do theirs on Thursdays now. And I kinda, I kinda like him being here really, getting a lot more.
Input.
Well, he says there was his laptop, and if we ask him, he goes, Indiana code that quick, don't he?
Yeah.
And it makes it kinda nice.
Yeah.
I have to tell you about the conversation that I had after the last.
Okay, this could, oh, yeah.
You know, she gets signed into court for her dog, it's murder.
It's may already been.
I don't, I don't think she has, the way we've talked.
No, I don't think she's been yet.
I know it's in November, I didn't know if it would've been by now, I figured it might've been, but.
I still can't get over Angela telling the officer, I kicked the dog. And he said, it been okay if you shot it.
To say that the court dates the thirteen.
Dog came after her and the two children.
I think it is, but I can't be for sure.
The two younger kids, right down on Main Street. And Angela had her two dogs walking them, and the dog was loose and came after them.
It makes sense to be a Monday.
She was scared to death that it was gonna hurt one of the kids, so she had to kick the dog, and she told the police.
Solvency.
You know, she felt that, she had to kick him, he said.
And it dropped.
Uh-huh, she is, he said, you could've shot the dog, it'd have been right. Yes, she legally could've.
I mean, I, she would.
No, no, no.
I couldn't have it.
Dean would, he said, he won't put up with it anymore, we've been cornered, it's enough, enough.
Oh, my goodness.
Oh, yeah, not by a big dog, it's a little dog, but that little dog has finally behaved, I believe.
On here, uh, Blair got calling, milestone, you didn't because Doug said it wasn't thick enough to do that, the pavement didn't.
Yeah, I was gonna talk about that.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
Oh, no, 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 that's all right, that bill her in.
Yeah, I got it.
She's got, I seen she had an underlined. Well, Doug, uh, Doug was ready to call, and then Doug says it's not thick enough to do that, so.
Now, is Daniel married now, Bud?
Oh, yes, yes, it's her.
Well, but she divorced the first guy.
Yeah, the second guy, they've been married, I think their kid's like fifteen or sixteen.
What, she have three children or two?
Three, Gavin and, uh,
and the other two, can't think of their names. But they live right now in Colorado, and they've got like a forty acre farm, and she's got, they've got pigs and chickens and, uh, stuff like that.
From Sabash, she came to. Oh, I knew, he's very sick.
He's doing pretty good with it, but yeah, nonetheless, he still is, you're absolutely right. But, uh, yeah, she came the first day for several weeks and, uh, then she went back to do her thing, then she warmed them by, she looked at those, interested in Jack's place.
Jack?
Weavers.
I'm surprised Rick Stewart's, she wasn't interested in that.
It was already so, time she started buying, then.
That's old queer.
We told her that was coming up, and so she called her. So now, Nita can pay the strokes, the commission, instead of.
All right, all right, all right.
Okay. Anybody got any questions about the minutes?
Has anybody else come forward about the chicken issue?
No, and, uh, right in there, I've, uh.
You advised.
Appeased by citizens.
I've told them that what we would like to see first office petition, to see how many people are in favor of it, from the town, and I think that's fair to do. Haven't seen one yet or heard one going around. Uh, Scott has spent a lot more time than me looking at some of the ordinances that we've got, we've got one from Lewisville that we're kinda bouncing off of. It's recently been adopted down there, right?
About chickens?
But, yeah, I'd also like to get ahead of it though, too, and go ahead and start working on some sort of drafting case that there is. Cause there's, I know there's three people, just that meeting alone, but I would mind having something ahead of time, just in case we end up going that route.
Well, if you get the opportunity, I want you to go to a site that tells you about chickens, the diseases they carry, how long it takes the ground that becomes contaminated, how long it takes before it's not contaminated.
We're gonna do that as we work this in the evenings.
And what are we gonna do with the chicken poop?
We're not gonna do anything with it, they're gonna do, or they're gonna get rid of them, that has to be all incorporated.
I'm talking about coming up with the limits ahead of time, so if we, we end up going that route, like, you know, most places I check, they limit to six hens.
Oh, absolutely, I totally agree.
Cause we don't want farms or anything.
Yeah, I don't know if you need six.
It's gonna be for personal use, you know, you're not gonna be raising chickens to sell the eggs or something like that. Also looked up per Google, which I don't know how accurate this is, for six chickens, it requires seventy-two square feet. Forty-eight square feet for the run, and then another twenty-four square feet for the coop. And then I was thinking, if we did do something like that, you're gonna wanna do an annual inspection with a fee, of course, to cover the cost of the inspection. And then it would really need to be behind the house, we need to, you know, limit the visibility from the street, you know? Um, of course, we would have to charge for violations for loose chickens or something like that, if they get loose, I mean, you wouldn't, obviously wouldn't go get them the first time and sit there and say, hey, you can't have no chickens now, but.
No, but you can't give them the first time, saying you owe us twenty dollars.
Yeah.
Can't do that either.
No.
You're gonna, you're gonna find out what it entails to write a ordinance.
Oh, yeah.
How long did it take us to do the pet ordinance, over a year?
Over a year.
Yeah.
It was over a year, and it, there was one already enforced, we just redid it.
It's not strong enough now.
No.
And they need to be property owners, I mean, you know, you can't be renting someplace and then decide you're gonna have chickens, and then the owner not even know about it. You know, a lot of people rent.
And that don't mean they have to be property owners, it means they have to have the permission.
Permission, that's what I'm talking about.
Long stick behind.
And then we also need to look into the, the actual state and local restrictions that are already in place.
And do they need a permit from the town to do this? And are we gonna charge yearly?
Yeah, that's what I said, it would be an annual inspection and fee, because they, we wanna be able to make sure they're passing an annual inspection, make sure it's, you know, up to snuff and everything, everything's good and everything, you know?
And who's gonna be in charge of that inspection?
Well, our deputy marshal, actually, is what I was thinking.
How do you agree to that?
We have it set up to where basically, uh.
Cause he knows what he's doing.
The lease.
Yeah, cause it, we cut out an ordinance.
He said he knows what he's doing, you hear? Uh, they can, uh, hand carry stuff, instead of us having the mail stuff certified now, he can take it. He can, uh, even write a ticket, uh, in some instances, in fact, the way we got him wrote. Who wrote the ticket for that fire burn up there that time?
Oh, to.
Yeah, I'm not gonna say his name, but yeah, that one up there on, Rick did, right, twenty-five dollar fine for the fire.
You wrote it, gave you rate.
So that just, just gives them something to do when they're up there getting their fake hours anyway.
You love to inspecting chickens.
Oh, I don't care.
Earlier this year.
But I, I know he's looking at the, the, uh, language on the, the one from Lewisville, I want something that's a little bit.
Got more teeth?
Well, not just necessarily more teeth, but I want it to be clear and everything, so when you read it, there's no questions, not vague. I would prefer it in layman terms, so anybody coming on the street can read it, and, okay, this is what it says, specifically says no more than six chickens. You have to have X amount of space, minimum, I mean, go bigger, fine. They need to be confined, that there will be penalties if like chickens are loose and in the road, you know, first time, maybe it's a warning, but second time, it's a, you know, violation, you get ticketed, whatever. And then after so many, then you lose your variance.
Earlier this year, a lady, I mean, it lived up on Pearl Street, and she said that she wanted chickens, I said, well ma'am, our ordinance uh, don't allow chickens in.
I mean, they, they made a compelling argument why they would.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
So I understand that, cause, yeah, prices are going up.
Listen to the rest of this story, this is how so many of our citizens don't go on down the line and figure out, what's this gonna cost me? Feed, water, housing.
I said, she said, well.
Feed them your garbage.
Yeah, I like what you said.
Yeah, it is, slop the hoes and.
And I said, uh, well, it would be a lot of stipulations, you know, you'd have to follow, and she said, well, have you seen the price of eggs? I said, well, yes ma'am, I buy eggs too, you know, and I said, well, to get set up, it's very expensive, she said, oh, I've already checked into that, it's only fifteen hundred dollars for a coop for them.
And you're worried about the price of eggs.
Yeah, who, who, I don't know that you need a set fifteen hundred dollar coop.
Well, that's what she had, uh, checked into.
If you have a six by six, two by four frame covered with chicken wire that they go in their end, then that's a, that's a coop.
And also another thing, how many critters are we gonna draw? Because we've got chickens, and they're between the coyotes.
Coyotes.
We're in country town, we're allowed to get the coyotes anyway, but look at all the little bugs, them chickens gonna eat, and out of our area, five percent of some.
Well, they're only gonna eat it in their little confined space.
Yeah, unless you walk them, are you allowed to walk a chicken if you have it on a leash?
I reckon if you want to.
Okay.
He's like, got the leash on him.
And speaking of, uh, the property at one seventeen North Main, I think it has sold again since that meeting.
You're kidding me? What seventeen was?
Oh, one seventeen.
How the hell is someone buying that?
Cause.
I don't know, we drove by again today, and of course, you could see into the house, you can see into the barn, that, oh, my.
There's no water.
The chion.
I mean, they're, is it like lithium or gold or something?
And Bob is working on trying to get it condemned, he did say that at the last meeting, that they were in the process of looking into it to see about the condemnation.
Just said they could be taken down with blight money before.
You can probably take it down with a hammer.
Yeah, but my thing is, on the black project, is people thought we could knock on somebody's door and say, you gotta move, we're gonna tear your house down, cause it's, it's blight.
I said, well, there's a person living there, and it's, well, why can't you take it down with blight money, it's an asshole, I got a lot of phone calls on it.
Did we get those other cameras?
Yeah. We got two on the shelf, if I'm not mistaken, correct.
You had to replace one out here with one of them.
Where are these two gonna go?
Uh, Doug don't, Doug don't need them, he said.
Remember when we had talked a few months ago about when we was having some issues with, in certain neighborhoods, with people raising hell, and uh, we was talking about putting cameras in strategic locations at different times, they, and Rick and, and I, we've, well, we've all kinda talked about it, really. Uh, so we got two on the shelf, when, when and if that arises again, then we'll have that option.
Of course, if they see you putting it up, they're gonna destroy it.
Haven't destroyed those yet.
No.
They're pretty inconspicuous, I mean, they're.
They're small, so they're.
Small, and you put them up, you can't reach it.
Exactly how to, like Kathy brought up a good question, has anybody looked at the cameras to see if, if, who's, make sure the door's being locked all the time? Who looks at that, and how often do we look at the camera?
Me, her looking at it, I don't look at it.
Okay, you look at it?
I look at it.
Not seen anything suspicious, or you would've called me, right?
Yeah.
Well, when I saw that big sign, I thought, well, somebody's left the door unlocked again.
I come here on a weekend and just walked right in, you talk about being.
Couple times.
Yeah, two times on the weekend.
Your door, it looks like Dodd, D O O D, lock Dodd when exiting. D O O D.
That's not a R.
That's an R.
Ain't no R, it's the same as the first letter.
Oh, okay.
But when I saw that, I thought, well, somebody's left the door unlocked again.
We're gonna blame one of She- Shepherd must've wrote that. Poor Doug, he gets blamed for everything else. All right, what else we got?
Did you, uh, Scott? Get a hold of Milestone on the road?
No, and I'll tell you why, I talked that over with, uh, Doug, and in order to put those down, the strips that Rick's talking about, gotta chop in an inch and a half. That's all the pavement that's on that road, the inch and a half. So Doug says that, and I kinda think what he was talking about, cause when I went to write Pat Monday, they got the signs that say speed hump. But their speed hump, the speed hump we had was what, this wide? Their speed humps, this wide. And it's such a gradual thing, that it starts here smooth, it goes up, it comes back down, where you can run a plow right over it. Uh, and that's what Doug's saying, he's saying that if we have to cut into the road, then we're taking all the pavement that's there. So it wouldn't be, uh, make sense to do that, so that was the plan. So I didn't, that's why I didn't call.
So Doug's saying to do what, with it instead of any?
The humps, but.
The humps.
But we're gonna, gonna make our own hump, if you will, uh, before we bought a, a rubber hump, where is that rubber hump? Did, did it get pitched? I know it got knocked up, uh, knocked up, that's.
Where's that rubber hump, they got knocked up?
It got torn up.
Go on.
Oh, my gosh, oh, my gosh.
I don't mean knocked up, sorry.
Uh, so I think it's just all about, and the other one, the speed hump that we had bought, uh, kinda went like this, and, but it had a rise, probably like that, and that's probably why it kept getting knocked up by the, knocked around, good lord.
Lifted up.
So he's gonna gradually go up with it, exactly what he will do.
So is that something he's planning on doing like next spring or something like that?
Well, I, I would, I don't know, hopefully, I mean, we've got things, Scott, that we've tabled for years, because they're, they're, they're a good idea, they're a good thing we need to do, but seems like something always takes precedence over it, and we gotta duck to it first, and then table this and table that, and.
Nothing was decided on which cars, police cars were keeping?
We waited till you were here to do that.
We wanted that to be a.
Have we had any more input from the police department? You, Rick?
It was just been tabled till you come back, nothing input about.
Well, how do you feel at this point, what, what are you thinking?
Uh, wait a minute, second. Probably, uh, at the, at the Avenger, getting rid of it.
And the Avenger is which one?
The newer one.
Two thousand, what was that, what was that, was it two thousand and eleven, how about that?
Maybe it ain't the newer one, but it's the lower mileage one.
Yeah. But it's not.
It's a cheaper version of a, uh.
A Charger.
Uh, yeah, cheap.
So the Avenger, I, you know, uh, uh.
And what, what if, after that, if this happened, what will the police department be driving?
Both Crown Vic and, uh.
Charger.
Charger.
Chargers definitely wanna keep.
What's the white one right now?
Crown Vic.
Crown Vic.
Okay, so.
And it's already lighted and equipped, so you, all we gotta do is just keep driving it.
And so the Charger would have to be completely outfitted?
It already is.
Oh, it is?
Yeah, I've been.
The Avenger would have to be completely outfitted.
What?
The Avenger's one.
Oh, okay.
That's why I use, sell that, and put that, you, you use that for operational, for, you know.
What do you, have you looked up, do you have any idea what the Avenger's worth?
Uh, I can go check though, um, uh, I can start checking with a couple of dealerships in, in Richmond to kinda see what they go for.
And Bud, how do you feel about this?
About what?
The Avenger.
Oh.
Wise choice.
Uh, yeah, I would, I, I was the one that said if we was gonna keep two, it should be the white one and one of the others. And one of the, it does make sense, cause Rick has taken that home, uh, quite a few weekends and got light systemed in it, and get it all worked, cop ready, if you will.
What's your intake on how to get rid of it?
Sell it, I might be interested in buying it.
Sell on it?
Let's come up with a, we, we can get an idea on the price, we can open it up for sealed bids, or however we wanna do it.
I think the value of it's probably gonna be, what, what, the two thousand and eleven Avenger was sixty-nine thousand miles on, do a Google search.
What engines it got though? Now, if Ron was here sitting next to you, just, we'd already know that, Ron, Rick, I'm just.
Oh, so first thing we gotta do is buy a laptop.
No, we just need to have Ron come to the movie with a laptop.
Do you have any idea what it's worth, Rick?
I would, I would guess somewhere around five thousand dollars.
You'll buy it?
Uh, we'll get Doug to buy it for twenty-two hundred.
I'll give you twenty-three.
And the, uh, who makes Avenger?
Dodge.
Oh, it's a Dodge?
Cause they have multiple credit cards that are maintained easy.
Not all, Centerville only had one, and they signed it out and brought it back that day, but they were four top.
As long as I'm not abusing him, I don't have a problem.
Oh, that's, I understand, you shouldn't, you wouldn't have, I'm glad you brought it up, now you got a kind of an ideal, uh, of what a lot of that is.
Yeah, I don't, I don't, I don't use the credit card.
So like for us, it's George McDaniel.
I use it today.
There's a strip of land there that, uh, between their houses, uh, that is town property, but it's nothing to us, it's not a thoroughfare or anything, so we just need to, uh, follow the rules and petition it and, and split it up amongst the people that got it, right?
What's your first step in doing that, Bud?
Well, I'm not real sure, we have since I've, since we've been on here, we vacated some up here behind.
Some of our alleys?
Moving, did we vacate some of that?
No, no, because they're.
Between David Mosher and.
Yes, Mosher.
We did vacated that.
See, they've got to get in there because.
Oh, there used to be a through street.
Yep.
Now, wouldn't that lower our taxes then, as far as the?
The town don't pay taxes like that.
No.
And we vacated something off, off of Maple.
Well, not that one behind.
I thought we did, yes, something.
You've got to get in there, but there is, uh, things you gotta check.
We gotta have riderways still on all of them.
Cause remember if that guy came here a couple of years ago, and just moved there on, on Maple Street, he wanted to be able to put a fence up and say, yeah, but you gotta be able to get, get the utility trucks right away to come back there.
And to the, I think the railroad had to have something too, cause it goes right back to the railroad too, doesn't it? Uh, but yeah, anyway, where Mosher lives on North Main, where Hart Street, Hart Street used to go through to Water Street. And it hasn't for my lifetime here, so that was vacated.
You don't have, you, you know, that's not a, a common thing in any small towns.
No.
They don't, they don't like to vacate.
Yeah.
So you want that taken off of here?
What's that?
Yeah.
Sign ordinance?
I wish they'd, they'd have cool office alley vacant.
I don't know that it hurts to leave it up there. And that way, there's never any issues, uh, from the property owners.
Okay, so they can go there.
Says, it does say you need a petition to counsel to vacate whatever exactly that means. And we'll just research it and, we'll Google it.
And then we're still just gonna wait until we know something on the dog issue with the hearing?
With the what?
With the dog issue, we're still waiting on the hearing?
Well, as far as that right now, that's a done deal until the hearing, isn't it?
Well, yeah, I mean, I was, it's, it's going through Wayne County, she got ticketed, so I mean, I'm not sure what you're expecting the outcome to be after that.
What, what does take place?
She's got a hearing, she gets signed to court.
Well, what will happen, Kathy's not, thanks asking what will happen.
She'll pay a fine, or, or the judge might, knowing that judge, if I dismiss it. That's what they do, these, these, these dog, these, the county's not serious about safe, about dog safety, or about people, dogs running loose.
Yeah, I'll dismiss it. He, that, let me tell you, they're lucky that the dog did not bite one of my grandkids. Because there's about five or six people that would've taken care of that. And then my daughter feels bad because she kicked the dog.
Yeah, I told her, I go, I, I told her I'm surprised that she's not walked, I, I don't know, I don't walk anywhere without.
Protection.
Well, yeah, because I mean, dogs, raccoons, are, are.
Coyotes.
Any, any kind of stray animal or human.
Too late.
Too late.
Cats.
Rabbits are just.
Yeah, you got, you got, you got all kinda cats around here.
Oh, my.
Well, that's, well, if you, if you feed cats, that's what happens. If you feed cats, you're gonna have plenty of cat, well, you won't have any mice around here, though.
This is the time of year, if the mice are gonna be around, they'll run now when they're buying these, or harvesting these crabs. I've had two in my house this year. I say in the twenty-eight years I've lived there, I've had ten mice. I can live with that.
I get them. I get them once in a while.
I can live with that.
Used to have a, used to have a dog that used to chase the crap out of them.
We did too.
But cat really, like, would play with them for a while, but when the cat got older, cat didn't even wanna mess with them, didn't even mess with them.
I know, years ago, not here, but in other places, we'd have a cat, and if she caught a mouse, she thought she had to show it to you. She had to get up in bed with you, where you're in bed, show you the, the thing that she's, and she'd let it run and stop it.
Do, do you know if the other party is, is gonna be at that court or anything? What, what court?
For her being cited.
No, it's just an infraction.
It's my dog.
Yeah, it's nothing, no, she's not gonna be there, she gonna go in, she gonna go in front of the judge and, just like a traffic ticket.
You're a camera.
She'll, she'll probably pay a, he'll, they'll pay a fine, or she'll, 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 she'll talk about her side of the, her side of it, but, I mean, either they're gonna find her guilty and she pays a, I don't know, probably like a hundred dollar fee. It's, it's not very much.
It's enough. It's your pocketbook. Okay.
Alright, so I think that's a situation when you keep it on.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, just, just spent time over putting the cable up for that dog, so we'll see what, see what happens now.
You put a cable up?
Yes. Rick and I bought a cable.
Put a running cable so it could, it could run about thirty feet of that fence line.
It could move.
What's it on? What's the cable hooked to?
Two trees.
Two trees.
Oh, you got like a cable up high, like on a.
Yeah.
Pulling line back, if you will.
I got a pulley up there, so it can ride the cable, and then I got a rope that goes up to that, so it can slide back and forth and go out, however long you got the cable.
Couldn't move for over a week.
Well, good, their kids got them a, uh.
Zip line.
A zip line now.
I was like, oh, yeah.
He's only vicious, what?
Said her kids have a zip line now, yay.
He's only vicious, vicious when there's other dogs.
I'm gonna say, that dog, cause when I was there, yeah, it was just kinda doing its own thing, and then when the dog, the neighbor across, strictly across the street let their dog out and, and walked down the street, and that dog went nuts, try, but it, it didn't get very far.
How's the dog in the garage?
My garage? Yeah.
She's so old.
They're both old. You know how old people are, like, solid green.
That was just on the other day.
Was it? Charles Dastin, love that, love that show.
It was, it was on.
Reading people.
I just turned eighteen last month, I wouldn't know.
Okay.
Yeah, about like me.
Scott?
You don't want eighteen.
So, and something that, that you gotta realize, okay, is that, okay, whatever dog we confiscate, it's gonna be Greensport responsible to do something with it. The county is not gonna, if we, if they, they know who owns the dog, the county is not gonna come and get the dog. Now, if it's a stray dog, we don't know, they'll come pick it up. But if I confiscate a dog for any reason that we know who the owner is, they are not gonna come and take your dog, Greensport is gonna be stuck doing whatever we do.
Here's the thing, if we know who the owner is, how are we gonna be stuck if we take it back or tell the owner, you need to come down and get your dog? Simple as that, or we get it to Newcastle to have it put down.
Well, I'm just saying, we, we have to get some sort of agreement with somewhere to do something with, 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 with an animal that we confiscate.
And the shelters are constantly full.
Yeah, in Richmond, not in Newcastle.
And you can blame that on your commissioners. You can bring, blame that on your commissioners, who ordered all shelters to be no kill. And I said, big mistake.
Right, I agree.
I'm, but, my whole point is that, you know, we got kennels out here, and that's, 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 that's a great thing to have, but if someone's letting their dog loose all the time, or whatever the case is, yeah, we can write them a ticket, and whether they paid or not.
No, they need to be fined, definitely.
They'll be fined.
You can call Wayne County, the lady that's doing Wayne County now, will come get that dog and take it to Newcastle. That's what she told me when I talked to her personally a couple of months ago.
Yeah, she.
Maybe she lied to me.
Yeah, 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 she said, if they know who the dog is.
You were gonna get a hold of it.
She, they're not gonna come out here for that. Because, because we.
Right, if we, I don't blame them, if we know who the dog is, listen to what you're saying. They're not gonna come get the dog. If we know who the dog's owner is, why would they have to come get the dog?
Well, that, that's my whole point. If something warrants us taking a dog from somebody, what do you want me to do with it? Because we can stick it in the kennel, and that's as far as it goes. Wayne County is not gonna come and get a dog that we confiscated from a house. That's what I'm trying to get across to you.
Oh, then it would, it, we shouldn't have to put it in the kennel, we should take it straight to Newcastle. Cause we can't take it to Wayne County, cause there's no room, right?
Yeah, well, last I heard, it was, they were full, so I mean, that, that was last year.
Blame money on everything else except.
I'm just saying, it's gonna cost money for us to get to dispose of the dog, dispose of an animal.
Well, that's just like the call I got, uh, or that was gotten, and it came to my attention, that we had a lady that, bless her heart, and her heart probably in the right spot, was in Richmond, saw a dog that was running loose, wanted to bring it here and put a lark in it till she could find the owner. I said, no.
Yeah.
We are not gonna start bringing dogs, especially from other towns.
Yeah.
Up here, you know.
Needs to be like a case by case, we need to set something up then with Newcastle.
Well, that, that, that's my whole thing. I can stop by Newcastle and find out.
My understanding is exactly what Bud said. If we confiscate a dog, now I don't know about if we know who it belongs to.
Right.
But if we confiscate a dog running loose, you call the county, the county picks it up and takes it to Newcastle.
Cause we can't take it anywhere else. That's what it was the last time we had.
But now, if we, if we know who the dog belongs to, I don't know the answer to that.
That's not, I've never had a problem with a, a dog that's unknown. Yeah, they'll come and get them next day, they call dispatch, let them know.
Right, 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 right.
We had no problem with that. But if we know who the dog belongs to, and we are confiscating the dog for, say, say it, like, uh, like in your mom's cave, that dog should've been confiscated that night.
That dog should've been put down.
Right, but, and the mama should've been confiscated that night.
But at the same time, on an incident like that, when that dog had to been confiscated and left as is, I mean, maybe, here it'd been housed until it was decided what to be done with it. I mean, you can't just take them and kill them then.
No, you, vets don't just take them and just euthanize, just cause a cop brings them in. There's gotta be.
A waiting period.
Yeah, yeah, there's gotta be a waiting period regardless. Especially if the dog bit someone, they won't, they'll wait, I don't know, like ten days before they do anything with it anyway. But the point is, though, is that we just, we don't have a facility, ours is not set out, we, we, we monitor dogs, you know. We can't sit here and watch a dog for ten days here.
No.
So.
And don't expect it.
Yeah, I think we need to make arrangements with a shelter that's available.
What does our pet order say about that?
They won't take them, Scott. Help shelter, Delaware, Carolina.
No, I'm talking with Newcastle.
Kill shelter.
They're not gonna do it for free, cause they don't do it free for Louisville. Louisville's got a contract with them.
If it's a problem dog, I mean.
I mean.
I don't know if you can call Newcastle and say I have found a dog.
It's like fifteen hundred a year, but they'll take any dog that they get, but we didn't.
Whether they charge you to bring it in, or, but we're back to the same scenario. You call the county, and it's a stray dog, you don't know who it belongs to. They're gonna take it. So it, it's, it's, it's a mess.
I mean, I've been here for twenty, twenty-three years, it hasn't been.
It goes up a year every time you bring, every month you bring.
Twenty-four.
It goes up a extra year.
Yeah, twenty-four now, twenty-four.
Know what you're looking at.
I'm just gonna.
But, but, but the thing is, but the thing is, though, that it's, it's typically just, uh, you know, a stray dog, someone finds a dog, and then that's fine, they'll come and get him the next, the next day. But if we have to confiscate a dog, I can't just, I can't just take a dog and, and, and shoot it. That's illegal.
You sure don't wanna bother nobody if you did.
I try, cause the, the law is quite clear on.
Unless it's attacking you.
If it's attacking you, or if it's suffering. If it's not, then you have to, you, you have to take it to a vet and give it, give it certain medicine. You can't just take it out and just blast it in the head.
As much as you want to.
Properly.
Yeah.
Buddy, hand me that candy cane, please. Thanks, I'm eating the last one.
Good, we'll have some more next month, cause it's been a year.
Try it. Anybody want a piece of it?
Uh, no, thank you.
Kobe, you want a piece of that candy cane?
Okay, thank you though.
Should've printed out, Mark. Um, where do you find that paper, Dave Scott?
Which one, this one?
Yeah, I think that is.
We need, we need, we gotta be at this.
Thank you.
This, and we gotta get these two.
Yeah, real quick, who's gonna say, in the, uh, pet orders here, all it says, and maybe we need to relook at it, running at large, no person owning or having control of pet animals, should permit an animal to run at large within the town corporate limits.
Right.
Town police department may confine any pet animal caught running at large until it is either released to its owner or transported to a county animal shelter facility.
Yeah.
Uh, the owner shall be responsible for the daily cost of impoundment of the pet animal. Owner shall also provide proof of compliance with the shots.
So, before they went to this no kill thing, you could call the county and they would, they would take the animal regardless. And when they switched over to no kill.
Yeah, Wayne County don't have nowhere to put them.
They spend money on everything else, not on heroes.
Leave them alone, they're my bosses. Okay. You good for now?
Yeah.
Thank you, Rick. Anybody has no more questions about the minutes, I'd like to make a motion, we accept the minutes from last month's meeting.
I'll second.
Motion's been made, properly seconded, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say the same. Thank you very much.
Now, do we use it single first or do we?
I gotta do this other one, real quick. October twelfth, meeting called to order at six forty-five P M. Scott and I were here, and the clerk treasurer, Brenda Brown, were present. Council met for the adoption of the upcoming twenty twenty-four town budget for Greensport Civil Town. Buddy Strunk read aloud the budget, Form number four, ordinance number twenty twenty-three dash oh three. Council President Buddy Strunk motioned to accept, and Council Scott, Scott Cushing seconds, two ayes. Council Buddy Strunk, Council President Buddy Strunk motions to adjourn the meeting at six fifty-seven, and Council Scott Cushing seconds, two ayes. I make a motion, we accept the minutes from that meeting.
I second.
Motion been made, properly seconded, to accept the minutes from that meeting, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, now, we're moving right along.
Gosh, you two will have to sign it, so she wasn't.
She's just saying aye that, that, that they're accepting the minutes, right? She don't, it doesn't matter if she was there or not.
Did she get to sign it?
Yeah, cause she, she's, she's agreeing that, that, she understands what happened during the meeting.
Yeah, we just went over all of it.
Yeah.
We've never had them signed before.
You haven't?
Yeah, we never had them signed. I don't know that.
We did last month and the month before.
Well, I think.
Or the month before.
Janice has brought up too, said that, and she's seen it in the past where she could sign it or not sign it, or.
Where, wherever you gotta do normally.
We just went over it all, so.
What?
We just went over it all.
So the budget?
Well, I mean, with all the.
There's another one we should be signing.
Somebody's got it down there.
Alright, now where are we going?
This, this, right here. Next thing we'll be doing.
Is your printer working right now? Can you print stuff?
It's still a issue.
Print both sides?
Yes.
Uh-huh.
I don't know why it would print both sides.
It's a, it's a, uh, conservation, something or another.
Oh, no. You don't have to have that.
It's been set up to do that.
And it, and, uh, I think it figured it out.
Appearance by sin, uh, nah.
I figured out what's going on.
You're up, Ricky.
No, that did this. Oh, I thought you said we were.
No, you, you got reports from Bush first.
Okay.
You gotta hear that. Also.
Yeah, I started printing.
Yeah, new business is the ordinance that's down there.
What?
So, uh, I had, uh, uh, been, uh, I talked about, uh, uh, David, David Glover, bringing him on as reserve, uh, I've already done his, in the background, his driver's license. It's funny, cause I got a picture of his driver's license and, it's, yeah, it's funny, when he was undercover, it's, it's just funny to look at him.
Oh, yeah?
Yeah, he's got long hair and a beard, and, you may know, you, you would never, you would never know. But, uh, uh, like the, uh, like, just like the, um, uh, 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 motion from the council, to bring him on, uh, as a reserve, uh, if he's still choosing to come on, so.
Yeah. We, we don't need to make a motion, just need our blessing, correct?
Right, yeah. Well, no, no, I would, um, I need your approval.
Yeah, you need it.
Okay.
Yeah, I always, I always bring anybody before you guys.
I'll make the motion that if he's willing to come on, and you've checked him out, and he's got a good check, and he's got experience, I'll make the motion that we accept him.
I'll second that.
And we pay him twice what we pay our other reserves, if he's got experience.
Right, thirty times as much.
Okay. Okay, and.
Oh, you get to do a vote on that or anything, or you guys?
Oh, I made the motion, and nobody, and nobody seconded it.
He did.
No, motion been made, properly seconded, I didn't hear him second, I'm sorry. All in favor, say aye.
Alright. Halloween, uh, went, went, uh, uh, pretty well, and, uh, passed out two hundred glow sticks.
That's good.
Luckily, I took the initiative to buy more glow sticks. They only had like a hundred and twenty-five, so luckily I bought more glow sticks than I did.
Did you have something left?
Oh, yeah, I, I do, I always got some leftover from the previous year, but it wouldn't have been enough.
And they're still good from one year to the other?
They're good, them things are good for like four or five years, probably, the glow sticks. But we always gotta buy more, like ammo, you get, you have to replenish. Uh, the town clerk computer, we, we got the old day transfer to the new computer, and, uh, everything seems, she's still finding some glitches that, that happen, obviously, but she's working through that. Uh, I still haven't figured out how to email from, it's still not working right, cause I added email, I added my email to it, and it still would not scan it to a PDF and mail it over. You should be able to hit a button on this thing.
Over here?
It should e, it should go to an email.
They will come in and train people for that, I think.
Alright, I just.
We shouldn't have to come in and train you, it ought to be self-explanatory on that machine.
Is this, uh. Is it a LAN or anything like that?
Huh?
Is, is it hooked up to the internet or?
Yeah, it's, uh, it's connected.
Bluetooth?
No, it's, uh, it's got a cable, a black cable right there coming down the wall.
Okay, so it's got an ethernet cable?
Yeah, yeah, it's got ethernet, because she, she can print from her, her computer and, uh, I can print from mine. But, but the thing is though, is that when you, when the email, you, you go on there and add different, different emails, like GF billing. It's there, it's in there, I could have seen it, but it won't do anything, it will, it will not scan a document to a PDF and then send it to you. It should, but it doesn't do it. So we need to have them come in and definitely show us that.
We can contact them and you'll have to make arrangements with them later, they'll come in and train.
Like Brenda, there's not a manual that explains all that?
Uh, not that I've seen, but, I mean.
I don't know that, I'm not saying that I would understand it anyway, but I'm just saying.
Let's look at all the paperwork we got, but they're willing to come and train.
For free?
That's where I understand it, yeah. Usually the guy who sets it up does the training.
I mean, he might be able to, he might be able to walk me over the phone, so, uh, next time I'm here, I'm here early enough, we'll just call him and see. And then we'll, we'll call the guys, he, he might be able to walk me through it. It should be, I mean, I set up another email and it still didn't work. I, I used mine, I used mine, my personal email didn't work, so I said, eh. There's a setting somewhere that's probably not correct, maybe. We had to, had the dog complain, three twenty, three twenty-two South Main. Uh, yesterday, me and a friend of my son went down there and sprung up a cable for the dog, so, I mean, uh. It should hold the dog, but whether or not it does, I mean. I mean, it's.
How big a cable was it?
It was an eighth inch, but it was, it was aircraft cable, I mean, it's.
Coated?
Yeah, it's coated.
Plastic coated?
Yeah, and we got a, uh.
But what's tied to it in the dog's neck, what kind of shape is that in?
Well, that's a brand new, a brand new like a, uh, the rope is like a, I don't know, like a three-eighth inch rope.
So you put up the thing between the two trees?
Yeah.
And the cable that goes to the dog?
It's got a pulley, it's got a cable.
Is that new too?
Yep. Everything is new except for what's on the dog's neck.
It's tied to a property, tree on my property, without my permission?
No, no, it's over on the north side.
Just checking.
Well, it's on their property, but, yeah.
I got a tree back there, I just make sure you wasn't messing around with my trees.
No, it, but, it's. I mean, yeah, she needs to, she needs to do more and she ain't gonna do more. I mean, there's other things that can be done, it's a lot better. Cause you gotta, you gotta barn there, there's no reason why you wouldn't use the barn as a common point where the dogs could go into and get out of the weather, you know what I'm saying?
They can't get out of the weather?
Well, they can.
She's got a doghouse out there, but it's not big enough for the dog.
Yeah, I think it's a small dog house. The one dog can get in the garage, the one that's over there, it can get in the garage, but it's just, uh.
They need more shelter now.
Believe me, I'm gonna stay on top of this.
Yeah, so. We, we, we had the camera for the parking lot, it, it's out there.
So we have three cameras functioning?
Two, three, we got three now.
PD, I hear this door, and then you got one outside this wall and based towards the garage.
That's good.
Uh, I done the leaf letter, uh, is leaf pickup's over, ain't it?
No.
No, be over next Thursday.
They're, they're, they're doing it up.
Alright, well, it's posted. Post office, that, now at the, ca, now at the cafe there.
And they've been, they've been out doing about every day. If they see them, I think, if they see them, even if it's not a day they're supposed to be doing it, if they see them, that somebody's got them blown out. Especially with the wind we've been having, I think, I know Rick was out, Ricky was out Saturday.
Yeah, I mean, that's how Carthage used to do it, the whole time I lived there until about three years ago, then they changed it, you gotta bag them yourself, they'll pick up bags. Makes it easier, cause leaf suckers kept busting every year, every year.
They had to keep up.
They had to repair that damn vacuum thing every year, they'd suck up sticks and rocks and everything, it just.
They didn't have a dougie putting the filter screen on it that it would quit sucking them big things up and tearing up. Cause we had, we've had issues over the years.
Shepherd went around and cleaned all the gutters and he found screwdrivers and stuff. He cleaned them on purpose so that it would be ready for leaf pickup, bless his heart.
Uh, then we got the, we got the grant submitted on time, uh, still waiting for Brenda, Brenda needs to get, what's that, what's that called again Brenda, number?
That's Sam's number, I thought you got that already.
Uh-uh.
I guess I misunderstood whatever got stuck in my.
Yeah, uh, it just needs to be renewed again.
Alright.
But, uh, uh, at some point I'll need that, uh, if, uh, if we get approved, if we don't get approved, then I guess it ain't gonna matter.
Yeah, it needs more.
Uh, for, for a grant, uh, the, the DOJ, we put in for some vests and we put in for two LPRs.
And LPR is a?
It's an automatic license plate reader, so they would, it would just, it would just read, every car comes by, it would just read the plate and run the driver's. Information, of the owner's information, see if they're valid or wanted.
Make sure it comes back to the right caller.
Yeah, it, it's pretty, it's pretty, uh, it's pretty neat technology, it is. Some, some towns actually might mount them on poles where they're, they're stationed and they run all the time, and if you get a hit. It goes out to all the law enforcement agencies in the county.
Rushmills got them.
Yep.
Where do we stand with abandoned vehicles?
Where, where you, where do you have one, where do you have some at?
Well, I drove past. North Green Street. And unbelievable, there's eight, ten, twelve vehicles out there.
Where?
Boats, travel trailers, abandoned cars.
On Green Street? On Green Street itself? Cause I don't think, I don't, I don't see anything on Green Street.
Behind the fire department. They told me not to mention names.
Carriage.
Carriage in green. She's been asked to put up a fence, I don't know how many times.
Talk, talk about the very end?
Yeah.
Yeah, there, last time I talked to her.
They what?
So, uh.
They're gonna put a fence up. They've been putting the fence up for several months, I haven't seen any panels go up yet.
And it's been a couple of years.
Well, yeah, but I'm just trying to be nice.
But they do got panels parked out there now, at least.
It's, it's a mess, it's, I just couldn't believe the vehicles out there.
For someone who doesn't work, it's pretty, pretty neat, pretty neat trick, ain't it?
How is she getting away with that?
I don't know.
Has she been fined, Rick? Or made to tiptoe things away?
Not, not, uh, not on her property. For one, that property's out in the county, and number two.
Which property's out in the county? The back property?
Where all, where all that stuff is.
That building?
That building's not the county, I don't think.
No, that building is.
It's out of the county.
No, it's not.
And the reason why I'm saying it's not in the county, because she did have sewer at one time.
In that garage? Yeah, but people in the county have sewer.
Yep.
So I, I wouldn't use that as a litmus test.
Nuter.
Yeah, cause she, yeah, so, yeah, there, there's people in the county that have.
I didn't know the place was in the county.
That place is out in the county. Cause the fire department, that, where's the, where's that big lot at? Behind the fire department. Does, doesn't the township own that?
I think so.
The township owns the ball diamond and the fire department property.
And the, that big yard behind it, that big lot, it'd be a lot where, where everybody parks at.
That's where the other ball diamond is, there's, that's another ball diamond back there.
He, he's talking about.
Where people park at.
Where they park.
Then, then you go to her, her, her property right there.
How about that map?
Oh, right behind the fire department?
Yeah, right behind the fire department, you got the driveway and the ball diamond is right and then parking, they park in the grass on the left.
Well, I kinda thought that the fence that ran on the other side of Carriage Street. No, the one that runs, uh, east and west was the, uh, basically anything.
But, it doesn't matter as far as whether her house is in the property or not, there's still, there's still a state law. But the point is though, is that she's been putting the RV in front, supposed to be blocking the other, and she's supposed to be putting a fence up.
There's even boats up there now.
Well, she's had boats, she has, she's had a boat back here. She had a boat back here for several years.
You could look on Beacon and see if it's in the county.
I mean, it, it, it doesn't matter if she's in the county or not, cause the ordinance that we're using is the, is, is a state ordinance for abandoned vehicles.
And I got called about the property on the corner of State Road thirty-eight in Maple. The travel trailer or the motor home.
RV?
Yes.
Well, they wanna know about, what, what do they wanna know about it?
Well, it doesn't run, it was pulled there by a.
Tow truck?
Wrecker, tow, tow truck, whatever. Nothing we can do about it?
Well, Rob, you know, you know what you're talking about?
Yeah, the one that, the one that.
Across from Stuart's old place.
Yeah, yeah. Uh, I had to go there, I had to look at RVs, how they classify RVs, I would think are. I, I would think RV would be a motor vehicle, I would assume, it's not a home.
Well, like I said, I got called about it and asked how they were getting away with it, and I also got called about the first place. East of Alan's house, the first new house that Paula had put up. Along the fence row, you got the Christian church, and then you got Deering's old place, then you got.
The very first modular home?
Yes.
What, and what about it?
There's, along the fence row there, there's two, I believe, two vehicles.
Vehicle packed up against the fence, I know what you're telling me, you've been up there for a few years back.
Big, big heavier guy?
I don't know about.
I was out there, I was out there this weekend, he was working on one of them, cause I, I stopped to talk to him for a second about a dog next door to him.
Well, I got called about those three places. And I said that I would bring it up and see if there was anything we could do. That's all I've got. Anybody else got any questions for Rick? Make a motion, we accept the police report.
I second.
Motion's been made, properly seconded, to accept the police report, all in favor say aye.
Alright.
All opposed say the same. Motion carried, thank you.
Thank you, Rick.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you for your help with this dog problem.
You're welcome. I can look up on, on RV, I would think a RV would, it would kinda have a motor vehicle, I would think.
Well, RV is a motor vehicle, it's one you drive.
Well, a travel trailer's an RV.
There we go.
A pop-up camper.
Is a trailer.
Is a trailer. An RV is a travel trailer, a fifth wheel, self-contained, all sides.
Oops.
That was self-contained, ain't it?
Yeah, it's, it's.
It's a pusher or whatever you wanna call it.
But a motor home.
No, it has to drive, it's.
Yeah, it's, it's got.
She's telling you, she's, this is Miss Raper back there telling us the truth.
So a motor home would be, obviously it's drivable, it, it, I believe it would be treated like a car or a truck if we're sitting somewhere.
It'd be a motor vehicle.
Travel trailer is a, the fiddle are towable.
But there again, if I was sitting there, we would know by now, but that's okay.
That's called, that's more than the Air Force.
That's right. Okay, we all, it's all good, we've accepted your report, which you don't leave. Sewer plant operations report, uh, wastewater superintendent. The report, evidently, I know we've had some issues in the past, uh, out there, it's up and running right now, must be running good. Wastewater Treatment Pack monthly report. Oh, yeah, I said. Uh, not presents. Building Commissioners Report, Building Inspector, Bob drop anything off, leave any notes or anything?
Are we up to date on Tandy's, all his permits?
Yeah.
Okay.
I noticed, I saw him in the window.
Is he gonna live there?
No, he's just gonna build it up for like, he got a beautiful place up, you ever been to this place?
Uh, oh, no.
Oh, at, I tell you what, upgrade him.
Really?
Well, yeah.
It's that nice?
Very nice, he's got it set up nicely back there, I'm, I'm very much impressed. I think what he's gonna do there is have like a workshop, and I think he might even, he's kinda cutting all, you notice how he's cut the front off of that building where he's got a platform, he can. Drive something, I think that's cool, and I think he's gonna showcase things there maybe, and.
Well, that's neat.
Over the time, he's kinda like a, uh, a guy that likes to buy vehicles and fix them up and, uh, good for him, good for us. Yeah, I'm, I'm guessing he's gonna have it nice enough where he's probably gonna need to potty it again and.
It should.
Pick up another.
I think you, that should happen.
Uh, how about a sewer utility monthly income and disbursement report from Nita Moore?
Well, I don't know if you wanna hear this or not.
Okay, we'll move on.
We have to.
But I'm gonna say it anyway.
We don't have to, we can read it.
Uh, just go ahead and read it, we are spending more, we're taking in.
Well, that's.
We've been doing that for a long time.
Exactly.
We had gotten a good position, but now pumps have doubled and we're gonna have to curve the spending somehow or another, I'm not sure how you.
Every month, it's been that way.
Yeah, um. We had a good year in, uh, what, uh, two thousand nineteen, a good year in two thousand twenty, and a good year in twenty-one, and twenty-two, we started sinking again.
Well.
In twenty-two, and twenty-three.
Simply falling apart, that's all.
That's just gonna be the nature of the beast, I mean, it's twenty years old.
Yeah, and the pumps going out and since COVID and, uh, administration got in there, it rains away, so everything, you know. Pumps cost.
Well, and as much as we don't wanna do it, we're looking at, very close here, we're gonna have to raise the sewer bill.
Yeah, but it'd be.
So we have to spend money to raise it.
Yeah.
It's stupid.
Yeah.
Hopefully, we're out of here by then.
Hopefully, the state are by then.
Yeah, I hate to see that happen.
I do too.
At the beginning of October, we did have twelve accounts that was into ninety days, and the clerk, uh, only had to, uh. Uh, record three new sewerlings in October, and right now, we got thirty-eight outstanding sewerlings that have to be paid through the Wayne County Tracer's Department. Uh, that's kind of a low number. We're doing better than, on the lens than what we used to do, but, uh, we are spending more than we're taking in, so I don't know. I guess you're gonna start scrutinizing everything, all their spending, see if it's really necessary or what. No.
Nobody is capable of overseeing it, as far as I know. Is there, Ben?
What's that?
Anybody capable of overseeing what's being spent at the sewer plant? If everything is totally necessary?
E- exactly, I mean, same with the sewer plant, if it, if something they gotta have, the bottom line is, they gotta have it. You, ideally, uh. Your certified operator would be in, um, in charge of all that, I would think, but in our case is a little bit different than most cases because of our Doug guy.
Sadly, when something happens, it has to be taken care of.
Exactly.
It really is, and honestly, Rick Stewart did have a tendency to. Stay on top of some of that piddly spending and that stuff, and we don't have that now. That, that, um, that person who was willing to do that, tries to do that, or manages to keep his thumb on it.
So he's been out of control last year and this year.
Well, but it was not, it's, it's right now, it's escalating back up where it was before you guys started putting more restrictions on. Calling, you guys approving, saying yea or nay.
Well, they, they have a limit and they have to call, right Doug?
They, I get a call every time they go to, uh, Nettle Creek, I don't care if it's fifteen dollars or fifty dollars.
Nobody spends much money at Nettle Creek.
Well.
Wayne County.
I don't get a call from anywhere else, so.
Right, they go to Wayne County and spend.
Well, Wayne County was supposed to have called us also, so maybe it's time that we need to just.
Renew that.
Put our feelers out to them and say, hey, we, you know, we had a deal years ago, you dropped the ball.
Well, I, I, I'm gonna disagree with that, I think it should come from whoever's going out there to buy. This is what we're gonna buy, I don't think it should come from Wayne County for them to call us and say. Your guys are here, they wanna buy this. I think the guys should be calling you. We need to spend this to buy this.
I work, we'll let them call you. Me and Scott work, so we're kinda tied up during the day, and that's when the places are open, that's when they work here, so. That makes it kinda tough for them to, you know. When they call me on Monday.
It is because we're calling, they're gonna call you and tell you what they need, how are you gonna tell them to know if it's a true need? How are you gonna tell them to know if it's a true need?
That's right. How am I gonna know if they need it?
Exactly. Same way with any of us.
When you're standing there at Gilman's or Ace or Wayne County Sales, they're standing there waiting while they're getting what they're getting. Oh, shoot, yeah, I need a new pair of gloves. Oh, yeah, I need a new tape measure. Oh, yeah, I need some, I need these nails or these.
So the approval's already been, so then they start adding. I see where you're going with that.
Well, we have.
How many, how many times does your budget get blown when you go to the store because you see something else you need?
Who even uses a budget? You use a budget when you go to the store? Thank you.
No.
Well, it's not like I go to this Kroger and Walmart, so you know how that goes.
Yeah.
No, if we're at the point in our lives that we need it or want it, we get it.
That we worked on. I'll have to be able to get to that.
That's exactly right.
They do bring back like itemized receipts, right?
Oh, yeah.
It's like calling teeth sometimes to get them.
Yeah. Uh, we've had a few, uh, maybe with auto parts, uh, problems that we've had, I don't know. Not necessarily our fault, but on the auto parts' fault, so. There's a, a lot to that too. Okay.
But that's after the fact when I bring the receipt.
Well, Nita, thank you for that nasty report. I'd like to make a motion that we accept Nita's dirty report. Motion's been made and properly seconded to accept the, uh, utility monthly income and dispersment report. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, say the same. Motion carried. Thank you. Street report. Weaver and Shepherd.
And you got a copy of it.
Yes, we did.
I didn't make copies for everybody if any of you were.
October the fourth, this one mowed the grass and sprayed for weeds at the plant.
What's this firehouse place? Millings, that firehouse on Drive?
The built Millings, when they did thirty-eight here, or Pearl Street, they dug that up and they paved it. They had the milling that they dumped, and they sent some here, they left some at the, uh.
Okay. Now we use them.
Firehouse.
Yeah.
Ron actually had that done.
He didn't have one.
Ron.
Did he?
Yeah. Ron, Ron was doing, doing security that day when he was out, when he was out here, he was calling. Yeah.
But that's the milling for they tore off the road and put it back down. Cut out window at plant. Did I say cut out window? I noticed it was cut out.
Yeah, if you want to next month, I can make everybody a copy of it for this.
No, it's not necessary.
Cut the street. Well, I just gave her one person, and I take the other person to have there. Put the riser together. Went to plant, on window, put tools away. Something moved the paver, fixed the riser, and installed riser on Maple. So they got the riser in on Maple. That was one thing that's been on the table for a few years.
Oh, the, the drain thing.
About five years?
It's been a long time, yeah.
That's people living.
So the storm drain on Maple is done?
Well, not completely done. Yeah, I mean, it's done, it's gonna get done for this year, and they're just very lucky.
Kinda funny how it got done, just that she's moving in there.
Yeah. They, uh, they had to rent equipment to do it.
That's a big job.
It was a big job. But just think what it would've costed if our people hadn't have done it. We couldn't afford it.
So. Picked up pump and pipes from Stucky? I'm guessing that's what this is. That plant framed in, and something to window in the chemical room at the plant. Does that mean they put a window in the chemical plant that wasn't in there before? Things like that need to come for us. Simple as that. If they're gonna do any, i- if that is what that is, I'll, I'll talk to them, never mind. Never mind.
That, that's something they shouldn't be deciding on their own.
Finished trim at window at plant, uh, worked on leaf buggy.
I think they replaced the.
Finished leaf buggy. I don't think there was a window in that. That's the block building that he built for the chemical plant. I don't know.
Was there a vent window?
Huh?
Fan?
I don't, I, Rick, I don't know. We don't know, I didn't know they were doing anything, so I wouldn't know where it was. I haven't, I just, I haven't been out there. Finished leaf buggy, back mower, mower cleanup. Went to Menards for battery tenders.
You're not anxious to see that, how much we're talking.
Wayne County garage, clean garage, went to plant, uh, no.
Hey, Rick.
Yes.
Picked up leaves, been thirteen. Started taking apart the air handler. Put that motor in, I'm guessing. We did get the motor in on the air handler.
Yeah, they delivered it here and they had to take it out there.
Yeah, it's a big heavy duty.
Semi come in with it. Yep. I gotta call it was coming.
I know they've had to do some work out at the sewer plant. Uh, must be unhooked pipes from the duster, letting water drain. Out. The only thing that I've always requested multiple times is that, we're writing all this down. So wait, we had this form made up, time in, time out. How many hours did they do this? How many hours did they do this? But they have never put that in.
So then what are we paying them?
What do you mean?
Since they don't have a time in, time out, what do we pay them?
Oh, we go by their time cards. They clock in and out.
They clock in and out. That's why they feel they don't need to put the time down here, cause time's on the time.
Well, we were told when we brought that up, and it came from Doug. You can't get us down to every minute, us telling you, telling you what we're doing. It, he said it just won't work.
That's, I know, you know.
Well, now that you're the, uh, street commissioner, you can get with these guys, whether you do them sometime.
But they, they have time clocks. So they come here to clock in?
Right here.
There's time clock here and at the sewer plant.
Yeah.
Yeah, like I said, I'll be able to see what kinda hours we're talking about.
Oh, so if they clock in here, they clock out here, and if they clock in there, they clock out there.
Yeah, we'll be able to tell them if they're, hey, the hours they got in. And of course, it's, it can become confusing because some of it comes from the general and some of it comes from the sewer.
Cause they're, they're basically covering two roles.
Yeah.
And I've complained for the last six months that our street guy is getting entirely too mu- too many hours.
Well, and I've complained to you for the last eight months that things ain't the way they used to be, but we're gonna look at that. We're gonna look at that.
Well, I just don't think it's necessary that we pay him a thousand dollars a month.
Well, I didn't ever think it was necessary to pay him ten dollars a month, but I was beat the hell up over that, and they're paying ten dollars an hour now, so that's good for them.
Well, we were fast approaching that you're not gonna have anybody if you don't pay him ten dollars an hour. And most, most.
I, I agree.
Of the younger kids will tell you, ten dollars an hour is criminal. And they're just not making enough money. They can't support a family on that.
I've come there and, uh, you let the officials that, uh, keep the minimum wage at seven and a quarter.
Well, I really can't believe it hasn't changed.
I can't either. How long has it, it's been there for a long time. And you went walking seven to seven o'clock when it went.
But we've all sat here and talked about the fact that lack of the word I wanna use. Coming here and sitting over and running for somebody else and getting hours in doing nothing except for chasing after tools or whatever for whoever's in there working. And then we're paying them both. And I can't think of the word I wanna use. Okay, moving on? Gopher, thank you.
All right. I'm making a motion. We accept the, uh, street tour tasks sheet report.
I second.
Motion's been made and properly seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
I'm gonna be happy about it. Just gotta get. You keep these, Nita, this mine yours.
I have yours because I made a copy to the book. Yeah, those are yours.
All right. This is, I believe, all trash too, isn't it, but.
Correct.
That's, that's, I'm done with it.
Did you want the street, you put copies to go over, Scott? He's got, did you want those copies to go?
No, they're actually kinda hard to read. Yeah, it's like their pen was dying.
Okay, well, we discussed the speed bumps on South Main.
Yeah, we also discussed the storm.
Mm-hmm. The outside cameras.
Yeah, we did that.
And that happened a lot. We were getting like a minutes from last month, and this stuff was in there.
No, we did, actually discussed everything in there.
Yeah. Ordinance regulated open burning. We know about that, the dog issue.
You'll just make an executive meeting from that, maybe, the ordinance.
Oh, yeah, we're gonna have to. With him present, Fire Chief. New business sewer utility account.
It's on the bottom. It's, uh, it's about, we're taking, we're taking in less than what we're spending right now, so something. I don't know.
Yeah, it's on the bottom.
Yeah, I mean, it's in the bottom.
It's on this.
If you're talking about it.
It's a separate page.
We need to keep a close eye on it comes running out of money.
Yeah.
Gotcha.
Yeah. Yeah, you gotta keep a close eye on it. That's all. I just want it on there.
Until we have, until we can have representation from the sewer entity, it's kinda hard for us to do anything.
That's right.
And what, what are we talking about sewer utility account? What?
Talking about, it's running out of money. We talked about earlier, the sewer.
I just wanted to make you guys aware of the situation.
You're talking about this.
No, yeah, yeah, well, yeah, you, I see what you was going, yeah, kind of sort of.
Well, and, and truthfully, we are out of street payroll and out of miscellaneous labor payroll. I'm gonna have to find it for somewhere.
Well, like them bringing Beckett in, what'd we pay her?
We were damn lucky to have her.
Yes.
We got too many we're paying right now.
Well, we didn't pay Beckett anything this month.
No.
No.
I mean, she didn't work too.
She went out there and went on a roof and roofed.
Yeah, she went on a roof because Wayne Cutten, health reasons. Uh, Doug, I think, that's why she come out to help, was to help Doug. Up on the roof. That was the last time she was out there. And when the sewer overturned, she may have come out there, but I think it would've been.
Well, she certainly got on the payroll, isn't she?
Well, she's still on the payroll.
Don't mean she gets paid if she, just cause she's on the payroll. Huh?
She's not salary.
Oh, and.
No, 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 yeah, she don't, I mean, if she don't.
Yeah, she hasn't been paid.
Since she's left, she probably hasn't been paid, what, ten hours, twenty hours, maybe?
Yeah.
At the whole, the whole time. And that's just, she's just an emergency filling type person.
She is willing to help, and I certainly appreciate you going, uh, hiring some roofers and see what it costs.
Well, I'm just saying that the, we just, we're, we've spent our street budget money and we've spent the miscellaneous income money. And local road and streets been spent out of the eleven oh one account.
And all the money's gone towards the sewer plant.
No.
Can't.
No, can't.
No.
Sewer, the sewer plant does pay for some items, though, that, that they use because they should. They pay for the copier part of the time. They pay for the, they do a truck payment every month.
They should pay for some fuel.
They pay for fuel. They pay for some office supplies occasionally. They pay for internet, cause they're using the same, and the phone, they're using both of those things too. Kinda alternate back and forth on that. Since, since they're broke next month, town would probably pay most of this.
It's a balance, yeah, it's a juggle. It's a juggle. It always has been. But the last couple of years, it's been not quite as bad as it was five, six, eight years ago.
The street department has been busy, so it's not like, you know, we run into that this time of year too. If there's salt to be purchased, if there's snow.
Salt and.
There were hairs.
The salt and stuff.
We get it from county when we need it. It's a mix of gravel and salt.
Sand and salt.
Sand and salt, yeah.
But we don't store any of it.
No, we go get what we need, cause we don't need that much.
Most of them get by plowing.
One time, one time they do.
Even if you plow, you gotta put that salt, cause if you.
They goofed and bought pure salt. They didn't know. That was expensive.
Took the whole budget for salt.
Yeah, took the whole budget for one, one snow.
Yeah.
So that, and then they actually, the county even contacted us and said, now, you know, you guys bought pure salt. Nobody does that.
The county, we have money budgeted for that or not?
Budgeted for.
For the salt that we're gonna, or whatever.
Yeah, and honestly, they don't, they don't even bill me until twenty twenty-four at this point. At this point, if we have any, any salt, we have to get any, I'm not gonna have to pay that till January.
Okay.
Thank goodness. And we've got NVH.
Supposedly, we're gonna have a mild winter or something. I just wanna make sure that we're all set up and that we, we have, what, one plow?
I haven't heard that. I've heard just the opposite.
Yeah.
Lots and lots of snow.
Well, Ron said it was gonna.
Looks like the plows out there blaming. I don't know if that's the kind of.
He put a woolly worm on there.
But, I mean, our, our plow's good and up and.
Oh, yeah, sixty-eight hundred and fifty dollar plow been used twice, so, yeah, it better be good.
Yeah, that's like mine.
Now, what's there gonna happen?
We're ensuring that it doesn't snow.
Well, the, the plow usually, if it's a boss plow, the plow's gonna be good, but the truck is gonna take a beating.
Here's the deal. Uh, if we get a large amount of snow, we are, they're gonna be, gonna to need to put the bracket on the new truck that can house the plow, because the, the one that we use for just a couple inches of snow on that red diesel, uh, it can't push four inches, five inches of snow. So it's gonna, you'll be looking at fifteen, eighteen hundred dollars to make the white truck adaptable to the plow. I'm just telling you. Hopefully, we won't have to run into that, but that's something that.
Hopefully, that's in January. Well, and again, we've got NVH, but.
Right.
And then we have somebody that's gonna, that's on call for the plow then, or how does that work?
Rick.
Doug or Rick. Rick and Doug, and whoever has to, Wayne doesn't come out, but Rick and Doug.
Okay. And do they take it upon themselves, or does somebody call them, or?
No, they take it upon themselves.
Okay.
We'd call them though if they didn't.
Right.
I was just wondering.
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
They've, uh, done a pretty good job with it. And if we haven't had that much snow though, really.
No.
The last couple of winters, I guess.
Lucky. Like I say, that plow, when we bought it new, we probably have it used it twice if we get it.
Not very much.
Brand new. And it's a real nice deal when it's set up, where you just pull up to it and bump it and.
That's a boss, right?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, those are good plows.
Yeah, like I say, it was, I keep sixty-eight fifty sticks in my mind. I think that's what we pay for that plow. Or six grand.
It was.
And it's, it's mounted on the, w- the diesel?
The red one.
Yeah, where they have.
But we need to get it adjusted at some, or get it adapted at some point for the Ford.
Well, Ford is gonna, that's where you're gonna run into fifteen, eighteen hundred dollars for the, the bracket you need to put on the vehicle to adapt it.
Well, you gotta have a controller.
You can't take it off the red one to put it on the white one.
You'll have to have the controller and everything too.
Yeah.
All that.
Probably all part of that fifteen hundred, I would assume, hopefully.
I don't know, where, where do we go to do this?
They go to Mr. Plow or somebody up around Greenville. I do know that Dan got the plow from his Dodge, taken off of his Dodge and did some finagling and got one for his Jeep, and we went to that place in Indianapolis on the south side. I cannot think of the name of it.
So I, I do know the guy at Fisher's.
Is that the guy with the ATV stuff?
Cause Midstate Truck Equipment.
Okay.
He's, uh, his name is Mike Eby. He, he's actually the boss, Indiana's boss, uh, wherever.
Well, that'd be worth looking into, cause those Greenville people, while he's, said they're the real, the cheapest he's found, they're expensive. I think it's Mr. Plow. I think it's what it's called up around Greenville. That's been two or three years ago too now, so who knows what it'll be.
At least you, Mike Eby. At least, Mike Eby used to be the, the one that everybody had to go through.
I don't think we bought it in Fisher's, I think, I really do think it came from.
He's got another, he's got another store, but I can't remember what it's at.
Doug would be able to answer all those questions.
Yeah, Doug's kinda been the one that attended that.
Moving on.
Okay, ordinance three, twenty twenty three, Nita.
You've got a copy of that, thank you.
I think I do.
That's for the town.
Cutten.
I sat in circles in this thing the night, but I'm not as knowledgeable here as you.
Can I get both of them?
Yeah.
You got them both? Three, twenty twenty three. It's your salary ordinance, this is for the wastewater. And I can read it, you guys can read it yourself, however you want me to, it don't matter.
You don't need to read it.
Nothing has changed from the year before.
I don't think so. Has it?
Basically the same.
It says, all hourly employees will receive consideration for a bonus at the end of the year, and that is what we do at this meeting.
Yes, but do we have the money to give them a bonus?
We've always come up with it somehow, we've been in worse places than this, I mean, not that we're not heading for those places. But she seems, Brenda seems to always find it, and what we've done in the past is, uh.
Right, clear a hundred dollars?
Hundred dollars clear, and that's after taxes, uh, is what we've done.
Makes it about a hundred and twenty five dollars a piece.
Then, uh.
And that's for.
I think, like, new employees, or, uh.
Fifty bucks, depending on how long we busy.
Yeah, or, or, uh, like, emergency type stuff, I mean, somebody that just ever, Becca as an example.
Yeah.
Uh, she would not qualify for a hundred dollar bonus. Your hundred dollar bonus people would be Ricky, Wayne, Bush, uh.
Doug.
Doug.
And mom.
And mom, that's it.
Okay.
And then, um, the new boy?
The new boy, I would say, I would say fifty.
Yeah, and probably Becca.
Fifty for each, I think Becca does it, cause she is there when we need her, and we don't need her unless it's an emergency.
And she worked apart a lot, quite a bit this year, early on.
Okay, Rick, Wayne, Doug, but there's two Ricks.
And I would recommend that, uh, we leave it at a hundred, except for, uh, the new guy and Becca, fifty.
Yeah.
That's, that's my, I'm suggesting, and we can discuss it, and yea or nay, or what, whatever, which is.
I'm good with that, as long as our budget can support it.
Yeah, it can come out of the sewer, but it can come out of the town.
As long as we got it, and it, it'd be, so they have it, what, next month then?
Yeah.
Yeah, that'd be nice.
Next period, for Christmas.
Yeah, I like that.
Uh.
We'll just have to be looking for ways that we could. Trim our budget or something, or.
Well.
Get a little lucky with some stuff.
What comes into play there, um.
Stuff not bringing down would be nice.
Yeah, as tight as it's been, we had a month where we didn't have a board council member. I moved that three hundred dollars. I moved it into where we needed it to use.
See, that, no, that's good, that's gonna do it in there.
Um. And if you want, I can, uh, show you some, sometimes I could show you my report and some of my doodlings and what we do, and, and. You, you don't, what's appropriated this year, you don't carry into next year with you, you know, it's new, new amounts.
So, if you don't spend it, you don't.
You gotta use.
So, I, I, I move it to make us get through, one time we, we bought that metal carport thing out there. Didn't I take money from like sixteen different, look, whatever was left in the pool, little amounts, sixteen dollars, a hundred, I moved it all in to pay for, and a little bit more to pay for that. And we did it, it had to be done by December thirty first.
And they coming down it in one day, I think.
Well, we could always do stuff like that, like, you know, if we have to replace, like, doors, windows, or whatever.
It'll be payroll this time. Big street, everywhere there's snow.
Yeah.
But yes, that's, that's the idea, if there's a little bit, to do something.
But when we, when we've been good with money, we've put it to good use.
Oh, yeah.
We built that wall.
Yeah.
The wall got built, and we didn't.
That's a really good job on a wall, too.
You know who built it?
Who what?
Wayne did that.
Yeah.
Wayne built the wall.
That's, that's really good work.
Uh.
Yeah.
Not bad for a short guy, probably.
Do we ever use back here?
It's the garage.
Garage, that's where they keep the white, they all.
In files, files.
Yeah, I rode in that, the Charger and everything, that car is in a lot better shape than a lot of the county cars.
Well, I remember you said that.
Yeah.
Got me remembered that you said that, okay, Captain. How many miles have you driven?
Remember, I was in the passenger seat.
About a hundred and sixty, nah, and you know how police cars are, cause they've got a hundred thousand miles on them.
Yeah, but.
That's traveling mile, how many park miles?
Yeah, but, uh, the, uh, there's a big, you can tell a big difference from sitting in that car compared to a lot of our county cars.
Oh, I bet.
As far, you can feel it in the motor and stuff like that, and in the way it handles and stuff, somebody babyed that car. Cause ours are usually ragged out pretty good.
Blowing who? Sure, Rock, you'd sell us anything we wanted here.
I had to be a supervisor's car.
Okay, ordinance three, twenty twenty three, uh, everybody had a chance to read it?
Yep.
Travel expenses, which to my knowledge, we've never used a travel expense, uh.
And we don't have, and we only have like fifty bucks or a hundred bucks in it.
Right, that's why, uh.
Look, we have it there.
Yes, just, I'll make a motion, we accept ordinance number three, twenty twenty three, for the wastewater treatment, the salary ordinance.
I second it.
Motion been made, proper seconded, to accept ordinance three, twenty twenty three.
Isn't it weird?
Wastewater treatment plan salary ordinance, all in favor say aye. Aye, all opposed say aye. All right.
Do you wanna sign it?
Ordinance four, twenty twenty three, which is the town, the town salary ordinance. Town council, everybody can read.
I know your reports, deduction report.
It's basically, uh, same as last year, I believe, in the cabinet. The special projects, what we do with special project, Scott, is like, for instance, how that. Came about was when we bought our own used paving equipment, uh, when.
That's huge too, I mean, honestly, it's, seems like the maintenance op, yeah, yeah, could be to get new hoses or something, or that was.
Out in the back, oh yeah.
I mean, we couldn't afford to pay milestone, or.
Oh no.
Or a guy down there on Road One.
No, it's like on the, the, the back hose you guys got and everything, if you have to rent one one of those times, you've already paid, that thing's already paid for itself.
It has paid for itself over the years.
With the mini excavator.
Trust me, I know.
With the mini excavator, the, the, up on the table was six hundred and eighteen dollars.
Yeah, for a day or not even half a day.
It's expensive to rent. Very expensive.
It's paid for itself, that equipment is.
Special projects pay come, uh. They would say, okay, we're gonna pay this, uh, we want special pay, then we'd say, okay, we agree, and we come up with eleven dollars an hour for the paving, which is dirt cheap. Dirt cheap, and, and, I mean, it gives, you know, my fear is that what's gonna end up happening is they was getting eleven dollars an hour, they was, when they were making eight fifty. So, when they got paid now, they're making ten dollars, if we were twelve. And even at that, you're gonna be saving money, but you, no matter what you save, if you ain't got the money to pay it, right?
That's right.
So, this is basically the same, uh.
Yeah, okay, all right.
Says, all hourly paid employees and probationary employees start at eight fifty an hour, that's the start, and then as they go, they go up to ten. And I know, we've never set it stone, like, we set it stone ninety days, I think it was.
It's never been set.
And I think it was kinda assumed at ninety days, if they were progressive with the way they were supposed to.
Well, sometimes you take them up fifty cents, or a quarter, or fifty cents, or something, yeah.
Who, uh, actually decides them?
You guys.
Council.
Council what?
Own the raises and stuff for like.
Oh yeah, we do.
Well, well, the thing I was worried about, like, if you got an employer that want to do raises on, what if we don't actually? I mean, were we just going off the recommendation of somebody working with them, or?
And that comes up every time.
I'm not sure what you're saying.
Or are you talking about just the overall?
What do you mean?
When you're talking about the money?
The, uh.
Were they going up on their money?
Special projects.
Oh, it's just on special projects, okay.
Yeah, and it, this is said, special projects, right now it's at an eleven dollars an hour. That's if they come, and it says board approval, they say, okay, we're gonna do it, and, uh, normally Doug is gonna be the one, cause he's spearheading it. Saying, I think, you know, we need to pay him a special project money, the board decides yea or nay.
Okay.
And it's pretty much yea, because what are you gonna do if you say nay, you're gonna go by house.
Yeah, that's cheaper than house, you pay somebody that the dollars just pay.
I mean, the sad thing about it is that, and I have said it for twenty years, this is a poor town. A very poor town, you see by that, that, by the budget that we submitted, and the budget that we put in, it hasn't been, it hasn't come back approved. Their level are cut in, and I'd be surprised if they don't, estate. They normally do a little bit here and there, don't they?
They sometimes shade it.
Oh, anyway, if everybody agrees to this, I'll make the motion, we accept, uh, ordinance number four, twenty twenty three, for the salary for the town.
I'll second it.
Motion been made, proper seconded, for ordinance. Number four, twenty twenty three, uh, salary ordinance for the town, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed say aye. Thank you.
Warrants, please.
Thank you, Ricky.
No, I was just thinking, I was just thinking that, that a McDonald worker makes more than I do.
It's harder than you do, Rick, you ever flip a hamburger, I did it for years.
That, that, that's my first job, burger chef.
Burger chef. What did they, Burger Chef and Jeff?
I was the Burger Chef freshman.
What did they pay you?
Dollar eighty-five an hour.
Wow.
And what, you weren't up to two thirty-five or whatever?
My first job at McDonald was a buck forty.
They paid me student wage, it, it was even lower than.
But your buck forty was back when a, a pop, a small pop was ten cents, right?
Fifteen.
You had a hamburger, fry, and a small coke at McDonald's for.
Forty-one cents.
No, it was fifty-six cents, it was twenty for the hamburger, twenty for the fries, and fifteen for the coke, and a penny tax.
Now, remember, when, when she was a kid, it was a nickel for a full meal for your family.
It was forty-one cents.
They didn't have McDonald's when she was a kid.
When I first went to, uh.
They had White House when you was a kid.
It was forty-one cents, I burned, uh, for what?
Ordinance, ordinance.
A burger, fries, and a coke.
So, what have we decided, we decided a hundred and fifty?
When we were down on South Street.
That was Powerhouse.
Powerhouse.
Yeah.
Forty-one cents, I got lunch for.
I good with you, Kathy?
Yes, well, you used to be able to get.
I'm good with that.
Five RV sandwiches for five dollars, now they're four for ten?
No, they're two for seven, they're two for six.
In the sixties.
It used to be five for five.
In the mid, early sixties, you'd go to Powerhouse hamburgers on Fridays, ten for a dollar.
Yes, mom used, used to bring home a bag of ten for dollars.
Well, you're Powerhouse with that.
Yeah, which has good food.
There were three of them in Richmond, and the best thing they had was to keep a tender one.
The last thing we're gonna do here, before we do the warrants, uh, hourly employees, consideration for a bonus, we are all in agreement that, uh. A hundred and fifty for the two lesser people.
Motion?
I'll make the motion that, uh, we follow the previous years and pay a hundred dollar bonuses to our, uh, full part-time people.
Our permanent part-time people.
Permanent, yeah, permanent part-time people, and fifty dollars for the two individuals that are, uh.
New ones.
Newbies.
But not necessarily, one's not a newbie, she's been here ten years.
Yeah, more.
And she, we're lucky to have her when we need her, and we don't have her if we don't need her, I don't think she gets you just out of being there.
Yeah, who are we talking about? Yeah, she went out and roofed the, the building out there.
I said she, we just, we wanted to have her when we need her, and I don't think she just uses us when we do need her.
I don't think she really wants to, but, uh, she will help.
That's the thing about you and I, we can always agree to disagree.
That's exactly right, and I would not hire her under any circumstances, after the way she did us.
I don't think she did us too bad, you don't like the other, the, uh.
Oh, like either one of them.
Okay, did somebody say?
I'm not real sure, I have no idea what you're talking about.
Did somebody say?
Second, somebody second my motion?
For the bonuses?
For the bonuses?
Oh, I second it.
Motion been made, proper seconded, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed say the same.
Aye.
All right, let's get this camera out of here, you want to?
Do we pay Duke energy for the street lights the same amount every month, every month?
No, we do.
Well, and honestly, it's more in the winter than it is in the summer.
Why?
It's dark longer.
That was a dumb question.
Duh. I was wondering what she's getting at there.
I'd say over the eight, nine, eighteen, nineteen years we've been here, I think we were a little under four hundred dollars a month when it started, and I think we're a little at five twenty something, five thirty something. It hasn't went up a lot.
Do they monitor those when they go out, or do we report those?
You report them.
We have to report it to them.
I've called in two in, in a week. And fixed one.
We chose not to do whatever that super costly thing was they offered to us to change.
They wanted us to put in, uh.
LEDs?
LEDs at our cost, and said, over so many years, it would.
It was like ten grand out of pocket upfront.
Yeah.
Well, it's their, it's their license, not ours, we're renting them.
Yeah.
Well, they were telling us how it was gonna save us money in the law.
Yeah.
That's called marketing.
Oh, excuse me.
So.
That may be true, but if you don't have that money, it's not gonna do us any good. It's like.
Here's the thing, if we don't pay them, they'll cut them out.
Yeah.
So, the electric for the street lights is the six oh four, and the purchase electric is what we purchase for all the pumps.
Okay, so the six oh four is streetlights, pole barn, and this building. If you have the total six oh four that you looked at, that's the pole barn, this, and streetlights.
Okay.
The twelve, thirteen, how, whatever it is, the other one you see, per just, is the wastewater.
Pump stations.
And the one. The one. R E M C lift station on Carlos Road, and then the other lift stations are all Duke.
R E M C starts, so you match it, three forty-three dollars a month, lasts two months.
R E M C's.
And it honestly doesn't even cost forty-three dollars a month.
R E M C has a much higher multiple than Duke.
That's higher than our electric is.
Yeah, R E M C's expensive.
Yeah, I'm glad, that, that we don't have a lift station there, if we had all of them on, there wouldn't be that trouble.
Well, Wayne County sales on last month, it's not bad at all.
Nine hundred dollars on one of them.
There's two. There's one for the street and one for the store. One of them is pretty good size.
You said Wayne County sales? What is that?
Seventy-one sixty-three.
How much place out there on, uh, Ted Davis Road? Why do we use them?
And nine oh one.
It's a hardware store.
No, it's a hardware store.
Yeah, but I mean, is there a reason we use that one?
Well, it's closer, yeah, it's closer than Norman Menard.
And, and their prices aren't, I don't think their prices are necessarily any worse
No.
than Lowe's or Menards.
Uh, I would think, I would think it would be more than what. Lowe's and Menards are usually cheaper.
We have a Menards account, and we use Menards, and we get the rebates back. And if we go to Lowe's, you get five percent off because you used the art.
Duh.
Exactly what I.
Yeah, the gas, the fuel. I guess it all depends on what they're buying. If they're gonna spend nine hundred bucks, it's worth probably the extra money to go to Menards or, and buy stuff.
That's several trips, that's several trips. They have to sign when they get a new.
Well, and Wayne won't pick it up if he's in Richmond. He comes here and then drives back.
No, not anymore.
Well, I don't mind that far. I'm just saying.
A couple times.
Just saying that.
I was saying this about Wayne County sales. I think Wayne did it. They bought a big tool. It's like three hundred dollar tool. And he said, why don't you guys let us have three months to pay that with no interest?
This is all.
And they did.
Oh, this is all.
Well.
And Wayne and Rick Shepherd's pay comes from the general.
From?
Yes, unless they have to do something at the sewer plant.
Right, some of them.
But the lion's share of their pay, I mean, they get very little from the wastewater treatment plant. It pretty much comes from the street.
Well, that's a shocker.
And, you know, Rick's pretty handy when it comes to some of the street repair, too.
Yeah.
Over seven, we paid him over seventeen hundred dollars last month for Rick and Wayne.
Well, and you figure that's about twenty-five hours a week?
I think they had like ninety-six hours.
Total, between them or each? Well, we cleaned all the cutters out before we went out with the, the leaf fact, and that's a good thing. Picked up screwdrivers and so forth.
That's what, uh, Jim Cash used to do.
Yeah. One time, we had to buy a new color, something that didn't, uh, bug.
Oh, more than one time, uh, several times.
For the leaf thing, yeah, that's why Doug come up with that big screen, that would start catching all the stakes and big rocks and tearing it up.
Yeah, you get a, you get a rock hitting that, that umbrella, it does damage on it.
Yeah.
Starts making a, heck of a noise, gets out of balance, I mean.
Yeah, we've got a leaf sucker, too, a big one, and it, we've hit, ping, broken.
Do we need to sign this or?
Yes.
I'm making motion, we accept the warrants.
I second it.
Most have been made, properly seconded, to accept the warrants from last month. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say the same. Thank you. So we paying new lives in two nineteen a month?
Yes.
I'm not real pleased with them, I'll be honest with you. I'm pleased with the reception and the speed of the thing, but as far as.
You did sign up for it.
Oh, yeah, but as far as them, their sales, uh, they tore my yard up. Uh, they took the right of way there out there, and they put something, I got a weed eater around on my property. I said something to the guy when my yard was tore up. He said, oh, uh, well, they'll be coming back and rolling that out. They never did, so, uh.
We actually have a conflict with our phone right now. We need, are you?
All right, why go ahead and, we go ahead and.
No, that's fine.
I'm making motion, we adjourn the meeting. Nita, you done with everything?
Yeah, I think so. I think so.
I'm making motion, we adjourn.
I second it.
Motion's been seconded twice, just adjourn the meeting. All in favor, say aye.
I didn't get the other one signed.